Call a meeting to order. We could have a roll call. Members?
Mr. Holding.
Present.
Mr. Gatos.
Here.
Mr. Jowella.
Here.
Mr. Goodhouse. Does anyone heard from him?
I haven't heard from him.
Mrs. Kilmartin.
Here.
Mrs. Koutash.
Here.
Mr. Manotti.
Here.
Dr. Ritter.
Here.
And Mrs. Yalish.
Okay.
Okay, fine, if we could all please rise and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to add, under superintendent's reports, report from the legislative breakfast, and I already talked to Chris about that. And also, under unfinished business, in the minutes of last week's meeting, uh, last month's meeting, we are going to have a committee for Christmas evaluation, the ad hoc. So, we didn't announce those.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Motion has been made to add those two items to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, presentations and recognitions.
Very good, Mr. Chair. We'd like to start with our monthly Innovative Educator Award. This has become a tradition in the district where we make sure we are recognizing the fact that we have some really very hardworking, spectacular teachers that are pushing the envelope. And this month, it is a great honor for me to introduce to all of you Amanda, um...
Wanda. Wanda Deschamps.
Yeah, I got it phonetically right here. I got it. Amanda, thank you so much for all that you do. And you're gonna show us, I'm not shaking hands with everyone today. Of course, I would be happy to shake your hand, but this is for you. And Amanda is gonna share with us a brief presentation about some highlights of what she does.
Woo, just to follow along. Thank you. I have the virtual.
Mark, thank you.
I'm a fourth grade teacher, so visuals are important.
Right.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda, thank you.
I do have a ten-minute video. I'll talk. I have a ten-minute video that I would like to share. But before that, I have a little agenda you can follow along with. I would just like to really thank Dr. Tuett, Mrs. Bellman, Mrs. Weber, the Board of Education for supporting my efforts and recognizing my efforts and my passions as a 21st century educator. Being a departmentalized, fourth-grade literacy teacher has allowed me to really focus and develop innovative lessons and modalities for my students. Not just teach them academics, but really encourage students to develop their self-awareness and social-emotional learning and help them to realize their potential as 21st century learners, even at the fourth-grade level. With the help of my amazing grade partner, Pam Ebert, I created a video that I hope just gives you a taste of what my kids are doing during their days and strategies that really enhance my instruction. I believe in student-led learning. And in the video, you'll see just some of those strategies I like to use to facilitate that. Well, I'll just explain a few things you're going to see. Starting with the habits of mind word of the week. We do a morning exercise with that every morning for their morning work. And it really is a great way for the kids to start their day on a positive note and really getting them into the growth mindset for the day. And they really, they love that program. It's really a great service to the city of Shelton. Also, you'll see them working with the New Zella resource. New Zella, I love it. New Zella is a wonderful, it's a great resource. It's a digital platform of high-interest nonfiction articles and comprehension activities. And it's leveled for the reader. So all the children need to do is log in and it's all, they pick their article, it's leveled to their textile level, and the content is at their level as well. And the kids, we've seen such amazing results with this. You'll see, my kids not only love to complete the articles and the activities, but they love to recommend them to others. So I have a microphone, several microphones in the classroom that the kids just love. But they love to get up there and, you know, present their information to others. And this really is a great way to facilitate public speaking and confidence for them. And we're just having a blast. And as a side note, today was the last day of the 12 Things of New Zella Challenge that was going on through Twitter. And we completed it, and I'm so proud to say that 48 of my students have completed over 600 article assignments to date.
Wow.
So that is a large number of articles for those who don't know. That, that little grid, we're just so pleased. They're feverishly going home, they're completing them. And it's not just about reading an article, there's a comprehension component. It really, it's a great, it's great stamina for those assessments and just critical thinking questions, which are awesome. Another clip you'll see in my video is Energy First. We do them twice a day. And this is a great way, the kids do a choreographed dance. Yeah, they're usually, each class kind of gravitates to their favorite song, and they do a choreographed dance, and it really facilitates interdependently that's working together, which is awesome. Yeah, so, and they do that twice a day. It's one of their favorite parts of the day. And the final thing you'll see in, oh, no, the final, student-led conferences. My kids are loving that as well. They, it's initiative we're working to implement throughout the district. And through the SLC process, students are encouraged to take responsibility for their own learning and, you know, be self-motivated and self-aware. And it's really about shifting that voice at the parent conference from teacher to student, really giving them the voice of their learning. And so you'll see here, a small group during, right now, we're just in the process of making goals for ourselves, themselves, and not just academic, but social-emotional goals as well, and making a plan for themselves. So you're gonna see a little of that. The last clip you'll see is Flow Cabulary. It's a great online database of interactive music lessons and resources, K through 12, that really, you can use it to teach any topic. It's like Think Schoolhouse Rock for any topic imaginable. And the kids just beat it up, you know, it's a great way to introduce a lesson, it's also a great way to reteach a lesson as well. So these, those were just a few of the things that I do to really promote. I do a lot of team-building and cohesive classroom strategies. But I just wanted you to get a little vision for what it's like as a fourth grader on the SS. And if anyone is interested in coming to visit and seeing these things in action, my kids love visitors, they would love to have you. Please email me anytime, come on in, we can work you into an activity. So thank you so much again for this recognition. It really, it's truly an honor, and it means so much to me. Thank you. Some of you might recognize the address.
You have a sheet of paper in front of the ones?
Oh, I do.
Okay, okay.
So, how was your day? Mrs. Wanda Deschamps today. You might recognize some of the faces. What's the word of the week?
The word of the week is whimsical.
And what are you drawing?
I am drawing, someone drawing, because, because it was when I, last night when I was drawing and coloring.
She's very nervous, not as good as we rehearsed, sorry.
Happy and calm when I was doing that.
Good girl, good. So even last night at home, you weren't thinking about this part?
Yeah.
All right, and how do you think it ties into being highly successful?
Because highly successful people don't always take them seriously when they do things. They take them seriously, but they don't have to do it all the time.
Yeah, yeah, it's important to have that balance, right?
Yeah.
Excellent job. I love all the pictures I'm seeing. It's important for us to visually connect pictures and create pictures in our mind to help us remember what works, mean, great job. It's time for our recommendations. You guys have worked so hard and you have so many articles. And I know you love to recommend things to others. You know, you know about New Zella, it's so large, there are thousands and thousands of articles to read. So when you, I know you like to recommend them to others when you're in the form of... Amber, come on up, let me know. You have one. Go ahead and tell us what you read.
I read an article about, it's, people say it's like a big question, that why do big animals have hearing?
Oh.
So, and this was very surprising for me, but they have hearing because their blood vessels travel through their ears, and when they have a cold, their temperature changes. So when their, so their ears, their blood vessels will pop out.
That changes the color?
Yes.
Wow, I didn't know that either. Has anybody else read that article? No, okay, you did, you did, awesome. So, anybody think they might be interested in that article? Awesome, great. All right, so, Ian, what were your comments?
I found it was really cute to read because it was like, you know, I like to learn about animals, you know, everything, so it was cute. And I thought it was fun to read because you, like, I never knew this. So, I thought it was interesting because I was, and I'm serious about this, I never knew that animals were born like that. It's insane that animals were born like that, because it's not like, um, earth-like. So, but I did, it was hard because...
Oh, it was warm-hearted, I love that. I love that wording, that's a great way to describe it. A pretty whimsical article. Okay, Murphy, come on up, Ben. Thank you, thank you for the recommendation. Sarah, did you wanna make a recommendation as well?
I did a recommendation, and it was all about the flu. And I learned that, I had no clue that the flu went from December through February. I thought it was like more common only in December, but it was always, I had no clue about that. And I learned that also that, um, the flu is most like mental illnesses, which I don't think has. So, um, they said, always, and a lot of people think like, oh, the, the main thing is not the flu, is the flu shot? But it's actually, it's actually just washing your hands.
As simple as washing your hands.
Just washing your hands.
Yes.
That it's really not true.
That is so important, yeah.
So, um, one of my comments was, it was so interesting to me because I hear a lot of people saying, oh, why, they would say, the teachers would say, oh, why were you out? And they would say, oh, I had the flu. And I never really knew where the flu was, I just thought it was like a little cold or something.
Yeah. You realized it was more serious.
So it was so interesting. Um, and at first, I didn't know why I got the flu shot. And the flu is actually a lot more serious than the flu. So I learned that.
Excellent job, fabulous. Did anyone else read this article? Fabulous. Anybody think they might be interested in reading it? Okay, well, our New Zella, our December New Zella Winter Challenge is still going on, so that would be a great pick. Great job. Girls, we should be logged on to our New Zella accounts. Today is the, today is our New Zella Challenge. Today's topic is sports. So I'm excited to see which articles you've chosen to read, respond to, alrighty, so.
I tried to learn how to, um, basketball.
Besides play basketball, you can sleep. That's awesome.
Yeah. I know I'm working on that too. So I'm not expecting to see you do it.
Remember the feature that you have to communicate. Okay, friends, it's time for our Energy First of the Day.
Oh, I like that part. Wow.
Okay, can I have the group one of SLC folks come on to the small room? Yes. All right, so the purpose of today's meeting is just checking with you. The last few weeks, we've really been talking about setting goals for ourselves, you know, these strategies we can use to set goals, to achieve our goals. I am also asking to think of things you've been learning and things you're really proud of by doing. So, let's just check in, and let's see how your, your thinking sheets are going. Awesome, so we're ready to go. And remember, I said this is a work in progress. We don't have to finish these today, we don't have to finish them this week. Our first student-led conference will be in February with your parents. So, you know, take as much time as you need to set those goals for yourself, to really reflect on what you learned and what you wanna learn, how you're doing. Was anyone able to add more to their thinking sheet? Awesome, you wanna share? Go ahead.
Um, I, I do, I want my patient's passport to go up a little bit.
Ooh, right, pacer test, and not in gym. So you not only have goals for yourself in the academic areas, math, science, literacy, you have one for June, awesome. So, I'm glad you guys are first. So, how was your day with Mrs. Wanda Deschamps today? Fine. What do you mean, fine? So, any parent can relate to that, right? Good, fine. It's a lot more than that, so, thank you so much for your coming.
Thank you, Mr. Wanda Deschamps. Mrs. Bellman, would you, one sec, you would like to talk about the work of the New Zella?
I think Amanda's click. Classroom's, it's in the middle. One instance is, she builds a sense of community with her kids and that they're there together for the entire year. They do something that's called Dear Good Friday, where they have to write, they have a sticky note, and they write something positive about someone else. And in the back of their folders, you can see them all put out. But her class is very accepting, and we have ALC program at Elizabeth Shelton School. So there was, a couple students came into their PE class the other day, and they just accepted this other student in, and he had such a wonderful time that they wrote them an invitation about coming and spending time with them, inviting them to a Christmas party or... And so, one of the students, which is really cute, he said, they wrote invitations, one of them just wrote, well, you know, we'd like to invite you to our party. And another student wrote, I'd like to invite you to our, Mrs. Wanda Deschamps' 14th annual Christmas party. And she said, well, how did you know it's the 14th annual? Well, you told me you've been teaching for 14 years, so it's just natural that it would be more than a year. The, so New Zella is unbelievable. She really kicked it off last year, and it was, they did a passport thing where the kids looked at different countries, and they'd have their passports stamped. And then they'd be an expert on that, on that country. But for Amanda, she embraces the whole child. She certainly has, we have a family that we found out on Veterans Day that is in severe need. It's a sad story, but it's being able to support both parents who are veterans. And what she's done, and what the school community and her grade level and the whole school came together to support this family, just goes to show that it's not just about the educational component. It's about the whole child and the social needs and moving forward and what they're going to need to be able to care for others and be good citizens of our community. So, I thank Amanda, and I thank her grade level team, and her husband certainly for supporting us and always being there, and thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Rebecca Auger from the Law &amp; the Brewne to step forward. She is part of the Law &amp; the Brewne who is doing the redistricting work. And this is just an overview of what's going to come next, the next things that are gonna happen as part of this work. And so she's here to make a brief presentation, and if you take any questions.
Tom, I got one right down here.
Great. Thanks again, I'm Rebecca Auger with an associate and principal planner with my law and the Brewne. And I'm here to talk about really the enrollment projections portion of the project tonight and update you a little bit more on some of your work that we have done so far. But I'm gonna talk about our analyses of demographics and housing trends, enrollment trends, and then get right into our projections. Again, we're focused in on the K through four, as that is the subject of the redistricting. We've prepared enrollment projections for the entire district, but you'll see that we really focused in on the elementary level. So when we start to look at enrollment projections, we like to get a firm understanding of what's going on just in the population in general in the community. And as you can see, Shelton has been a growing community for the last 60, 70 years. But the level of growth has started to slow down a little bit. The population increased about 4% between 2000 and 2010. It's still projected to continue a slow but steady increase. And the latest census information has you at just about 41,000 folks, which is right in line with that population projection. When we start to look at how population has changed, and all of these change maps are based on census data using the American Community Survey from the 2009 period to 2016 period. You can see on these maps in black outline are your elementary school districts, and you can see the schools located within them. So unfortunately, I don't have a, am I use this pointer, actually? Does it have a pointer? No. So you can see Elizabeth Shelton District outlined in black at the top, Mohegan to the left of it, and so on and so forth. What the colors are showing are census tracts and change in population by those census tracts. So obviously, they don't align with your school districts, but they align closely enough that you can get a feel for what's going on within the individual school districts. So while population have, was estimated to have increased about 3% overall in the community, you can see where it increased in the darker greens and where it actually decreased slightly in the reds. We took a look at student age population, that's students or residents aged five to 17. Awesome, thank you, my first. And this is not necessarily students within the system, this is just population between those age groupings. And again, here, we actually saw an estimated decrease of about 4%. And you can see that was heavily concentrated in the northern part of the community. We take a look at the change in females of childbearing age or between the ages of 18 and 44, so that as we're preparing birth projections, which are necessary, we have an understanding of what's going on here. And overall, there was an estimated increase between 2000 and 2000, excuse me, 2009, 2016, but that was heavily concentrated in the southeastern portion of the community. So again, taking a look at age composition and the change in the population, you are an aging population overall with growth in all age groups over the age of 50. This is not unusual, this is common throughout Connecticut. You have a, you had a loss in what we would call sort of the younger family age groupings between the ages of 30 to 49. And you can see that really evident in this chart. And then you had a loss of residents under the age of nine or under the age of 10, which you can see here. Again, these are estimates from the census, and this is between 2009 and 2016. What, when we look at that loss in the youngest age groupings, it does correspond with a decline of females of childbearing age with the highest fertility rates, which is usually between 30 and 39. Taking a look at births, births have been on a general downward trend since 2000, although you can see it's cyclical, which is also fairly typical for birth data. And you can see that 2017, you had a pretty significant spike in births within the community. However, our estimates for 2018, based on the first nine months of the year, have it back down to previous levels. So we do believe that is a bubble and not a near trend. However, it is something worth monitoring. It's also important to note that your birth, your lowest birth years really, 2014, 2015, those are incoming kindergarten classes. We take a look at some employment statistics to sort of act as a barometer for economic trends because when we prepare birth projections in order to prepare enrollment projections out of 10 years, we're looking at housing sales data as well as economic data. Your unemployment rates are in line with the state and with your labor market area as well as with Fairfield County, although you were made below the labor market area. So here's the birth trends again, and then here are our projections, which are based on a regression model. We were able to develop a reasonable model. However, that spike in the 2017 births is resulting in this sort of cyclical projection in both the low, medium, and the high projections. So that's something that, as you get more data, will likely even out. We also looked at the births by school district. We obtained birth data from the Department of Public Health by mother's resident address. And so we're able to locate it within the school districts. And you can see, you know, it's a fairly equal proportioning amongst the school districts. It changes a little bit here and there, but we're able to average out sort of the proportion of births by school district. And that uptick in 2017 was across the board, however, Booth Hill really saw an unusual increase. the board. However, Booth Hill really saw an unusual increase. Moving on to housing, again, just some census data on change in housing units was estimated to have increased about 9%, bearing in mind that your population was only estimated to have increased 3% in that time period. So smaller household sizes is what you would expect to see. This is an interesting chart or map where your change in householders that are over the age of 65 was estimated to have increased 30%. It's a relatively small number, but it's a large increase. And it was pretty much throughout the community and especially in Elizabeth Shelton District area where the increase was 50% or higher. To us, that's an indicator of housing that is ripe to turnover because it's older households that are likely in, you know, single-family units that are looking to downsize. Rental units are also important in Shelton where almost 20% of your overall housing stock consists of rental units and clearly it's concentrated in the community, in the downtown area, in the southeastern portion. Looking at housing construction, you know, recent spikes that have occurred, 2012, 2015, are largely due to multifamily developments, not sure, no surprise to you. Housing sales have been slowly recovering from the recession, but they have recovered pretty significantly. They're up, single-family sales are up 70% since 2011, which was really your low from the recession. And condo sales have more than doubled since that time period. However, they seem to be leveling off. You've leveled off really in the last three years and 2018 here is an estimate that we've made based on January through August data. Again, we obtained housing sales data by address and we plotted it out against your school districts to identify sales within individual districts. And the highest actual numbers numerically have occurred over the last three years in Long Hill and Elizabeth Shelton districts. But there's obviously pockets of density of sales, which is what this map is highlighting. It's just a home sales per square mile hotspot map. So these areas experienced a higher density of sales over the last three or two and a half years, I should say. So then we took a look at students that were new to Shelton Public Schools and plotted them out on a similar fashion on a density map. And we identified these students simply by their student ID. If they were present in 2017, 18, then they're not new to district, factoring out the kindergartners, obviously. So anyone, and this again concentrating on the elementary students. So anyone in grades one through four, if their student ID wasn't in your 17 to 18 data, they're new to the district. And you can see the density map roughly corresponds to where you had some high concentrations of housing sales. So then we took a look at if we could pinpoint sort of how the students that are generated from home sales. So we identified 139 students that were new to district in grades one through four, which represents about 10% of that student population. And of those, only 31 matched up to an address that had a recording of a sale within the previous year. Now, you know, moving in at first through fourth grades, you would think that yes, the sale would occur in that year before, but there are unusual situations. This is not an exact science, but it's a pretty good barometer of, you know, our students moving in due to housing sales. So 31 is relatively low percentage of that 139. So the rental units and the newer rental units coming online are likely a significant contributor to new students to the district. So then we started to dig into new developments within the community as well as those that are approved during the awping. So these are the developments that we looked at. The darker stars were our developments that are already built out, such as the Mark and the St. Francisco and Bartlett. The yellow stars are those that are approved and that we have some information on. And we took a look at these again in the top chart. These would be developments that are online already. So we have Avalon, Huntington Town Homes, Cisco Drive up Bartlett Lane and the Mark. And we just gathered a little bit of information on the price points of them, the type of units that they are, rental versus ownership, the year built, and then really importantly, the bedroom split as well as the total number of units. And we used these to, we then, I'll show you on the next slide, looked at student generation from these. And we were using that information to sort of gauge what we might expect for student generation out of all of these future developments that are not yet built. And I'll just call your attention here, up here, I believe we're totaling about 617 units and it's less than half of that in the future developments. So when we take a look at those existing developments, we just gave you a three-year average of the enrollment coming out of them. And all of these were online long enough to have a three-year average of enrollment. And you can see the students generated per unit. And they're higher at Huntington Town Homes, a little bit higher at Cisco Drive and Bartlett Lane. These are the developments that had more three bedrooms, three-bedroom units. So that's not surprising. And then using these, using this sort of average multiplier and factoring it in on these future developments, we're coming out with an expectation of about 20 additional elementary-only students that would be generated from these future developments. Again, all of these numbers are based on elementary-only students. There may be, we didn't even look at the middle and high school orders that might be coming out of these units either. So moving on to enrollment trends, which obviously feed into the projections, your total enrollment has decreased over the last decade. It slowed, the rate of decrease has slowed over the last five years. So you're down about 4% over the last five years and you actually increased this year across all grade cohorts. Just taking a look at the numbers in more detail, you can see while you're, you've been in decline, you've had some smaller kindergarten cohorts moving through the system. They're still in the system. They're affecting you as you move through. However, this year's kindergarten cohort is back up to 350. You had 350 a couple of years ago. So those larger cohorts are also now progressing through the system and that impacts the projections. Just a little background on the projections, we are using a cohort survival methodology. It is a standard methodology for enrollment projections. It really depends upon the most recent data to project the future. It factors in all of these changes within the community that are happening because of housing development and housing turnover as well as changes within school systems of, you know, students transferring in and out and changes in the population in general. We prepared three different projections, a low, medium, and high, because you are using these projections for a specific planning purpose. It's always good to have a range to benchmark against. So the projections in the high model assume that, you know, housing market trends will continue to actually increase towards the positive. The medium model is that current trends persist and is the model that we're suggesting we plan against. The low projections assume that there's a decline in the housing market and These are the persistency ratios we've used. These again are just a factor of the model where you track cohort as it matriculates through the system. Anything over a one in these tables indicates that you had students move into the system. Anything less than a one is a loss of students. And you can see you are generally positive in the above one category. What you can notice in these kinds of numbers are, you know, when you introduce full-day K, you greatly increased your birth-to-kay ratios. You can see that you were always under one prior to the introduction of full-day K. We also take a look at trying to estimate migration or in-migration of the system. So we just compare first through third grade from one year to second through fourth grade in the following year. And you can see that you have been running positive in migration, meaning you're, you get more second through fourth graders in the following year than you have first through third graders. And that can only be through in-migration because that's, and those are, tend to be very stable years. So taking that all into consideration, our projection models project over the next five years across all three models, relative stability. They're widely in agreement with each other so that between the low model and the high model, we're ranging from a 1.7% decrease overall to a 0.6% increase. So the projections are looking really quite stable over the next five years. And then out in the 10-year horizon, which is when we're starting to use our birth projections and unknown student enrollment data, it's really a degree of how much are we going to rebound in our projection model? So looking at the elementary school projections and a little bit of the history of your elementary schools shown here, so 2015, 16 through 2018, 19, where you have seen some changes where Long Hill has been on the decrease and Mohegan has been on the increase, although it decreased between 15, 16, 16, 17. It's been on the rise the last couple of years. And then our projections, again, we have the most confidence in our first five years of projections because we have that birth data and we have it by school district and we know the enrollment trends of the last few years by school district. And in those first five years, Mohegan is actually projected to have the largest increase, although Shelton is also expected to increase. But then it starts to level off and actually decrease a little bit out in, towards the latter half of that five-year section. And then Long Hill and Sunnyside are actually projected to slightly decline during the first five years. And we have these and we will provide to you on a by-grade level, the enrollment projections for the elementary schools. So this is the information that we are going to be using for the redistricting purposes. I also just wanted to update you that we have been working with administrators on facilities, utilization, and capacity. And we're working through that now so that we have a targeted capacity that we are striving for when we do the redistricting scenarios and all targets for you. But it's not quite ready for presentations yet. So any questions on the enrollment projections?
Chris, is our ultimate goal to have balanced student populations in all the elementary schools?
Well, that won't be completely possible just because of the structure of the buildings and size of the buildings.
Understood.
But yes, the trend is for us to have similar class sizes, I think, to your point, in the buildings. And we would, it's sounding, as simple as it sounds, we'd like to have schools that are currently overcrowded, have some of their students move to schools that are underutilized. And we think we can accomplish that through this work.
And to maintain that for, let's say, the first five years after redistricting?
I'm going to defer to the expert, but I think that that's where we can have confidence in the projections.
And we're going to try and maintain the dedicated rooms for art, music, et cetera.
So yeah, and we're starting to look at that with administrators, whether we can actually improve sort of a standard room deployment in the buildings because it's a little bit uneven right now.
I think you can see it's a very thorough process and this is really just the beginning. And in the next couple of months, we'll have some public sessions for members of the community that might be most impacted as the details start to become more clear about where the lines would be drawn. And I believe you'll create a variety of scenarios so that we can look at, and you can look at what the best scenario is in terms of then presenting to the public.
We are looking to do this for next fall.
Yes.
Right. And so all of this information will help us in analyzing those scenarios. We'll be able to look backwards at how they would have performed as well as project for how we expect them to perform.
You mentioned Avalon. Is that the downtown Avalon or the one on Bridgeport Avenue?
The downtown Avalon.
So the one on Bridgeport Avenue had no impact at all on adding students?
We didn't look at that one. We can't though.
Well, as I recall, I thought that someone mentioned how many kids we pick up on buses at that particular.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
The one on Bridgeport Avenue, I sat at a traffic light and counted over 20 kids. And I mean, this was a year ago, but there were a lot of kids getting out of that apartment.
Am I confusing it?
Pardon me?
Yeah, that's right. So it's not an Avalon anymore.
I'm talking about the one right across practically from Exeter, 11.
Correct, yes. Yeah, that's Huntington Town Homes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We all know where there's Avalon.
I can say in the Avalon Canal Street downtown, there's approximately 26 students.
But didn't that have an impact on Booth Hill?
The other Avalon.
That had an impact on Booth Hill.
Yes, but they were just talking about the one on Canal.
Oh, okay.
But you're right.
It used to be Avalon.
So we're getting older with fewer kids and the people that are moving in are moving in without children?
Seems to be the trend, but I don't, Ms. Auger?
I would say, I'm not, I wouldn't say that the people who are moving in are without children because I would say you're showing positive in-migration.
Yeah.
So you are having, you're experiencing families moving in with students ready to matriculate. You're not experiencing folks moving in and giving birth to children who would be ready to matriculate.
No, those are the ones that are moving out.
So you are getting older, as is most of Connecticut, but you are seeing families moving in with children.
How did you get your data as far as upcoming developments?
We contacted the planning department and worked with them. You know, there may be additional developments that are in progress.
Yeah, proposal stages right now.
Do you know approximately when that was?
Like a million.
They had a change in personality then, so the person who was there would be more familiar with.
Yeah. So some of it was pulled from a report that they prepared in, I can't remember the date of it. And then we did reach out in, I would say, September?
Okay. All right.
And, you know, this is good information to have as the community is looking at progressive developments. I would say that take a, you know, really take a look at this breakdown. Huntington Town Homes has the largest return of students. And I would say look at that price point and look at that bedroom split. And so it really, it depends on that when you're looking at new developments coming online.
What about condos?
Some of these are condos and they are, they are contributing to your student population as well.
Yeah, I live in morning. I know we have about 20, 25 students in the morning that I see anyway.
Right.
That, you know, it's, it's young families moving in, not people downsizing for the majority.
Right. And what's, I guess what would be interesting as a district to kind of monitor over time is are the condos a first step into the community and then they're moving on to single-family housing or not? And that's not something that we looked at as far as tracking movement of students, but it would probably be worth the district's while to understand that.
Do we have, go ahead.
Well, Rebecca, I'm looking at the regression analysis on the birth. And I know, I understand that we have the bubble at 2017.
Right.
But your projections continue with that bubble, going up and down, up and down.
Right.
And I'm just kind of wondering why.
Because that bubble is feeding that regression model and is causing that sort of cyclic hook to it. If we removed that bubble, it would become a flatter line, but I think it would also.
Would that not depict a more logical?
Yes, it would likely be more logical. We could probably put a trend line through.
That would be, I would like that because this, this gives the wrong impression. You know, from my point of view, when I think of regression analysis, it needs to look a little different than this.
Okay.
Thank you.
2019, they might have information from Carol.
Pardon me?
For births in 2019, they might have information from you.
Yeah, we're throwing leaps and bounds here at Shelton.
Any other questions for members of the board?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public hearing, and at this time, we allow up to five minutes for any person who would like to address the board. This is according to our Board Policy 9325. And as a reminder, no Board of Education employee, student, or community member should be defamed within your comments. Would anybody care to address the board? Would anybody care to address the board? Would anybody care to address the board? Sensing none, we'll move on. Okay, approval of minutes. We had minutes attached to our packets, including the special meeting at 5:30 on November 28th, the special meeting of 6:30 on November 28th, and the regular meeting of November 28th.
So, no?
Second. Most have been made in second to approve. Any discussion?
Yes, on the regular Board Ed meeting, last page.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, Montgomery.
Okay, thank you.
We had a legislative breakfast, and we're going to have a report on that later.
Yeah.
Okay.
How would that impact the minutes?
No, you said questions.
All right, sensing we're ready to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Communications to the board, none. Superintendent's reports and action items.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we, I'd like to start by talking about, under commentary, some of the work that we've been doing with strategic planning and some of the products that have come out of that. And I'd like to pass out, and Vicki, I'm going to need, it turns out, a few more. Can you, can, so what I'd like to do is give each board member two copies of this booklet and two copies of the printed version of the Think Tank, so you can have it and maybe share one with other folks in the community, that sort of thing. If I can put that down. This one's for you. Thank you. The booklet entitled Shelton Way is a booklet that was, by the way, the printing of this booklet was covered by our friends at People's United Bank. This is something that is part of our journey to tell the story, telling the story of what we do as a district. We're more than just a place where people drop off their kids and they leave first grade. At the end of the year, they go to second grade the next year. We do that, but we also do it in a meaningful, focused way. And this tells a story about how we do it, about the pathway that we're creating. This pathway comes out of a lot of discussions with the strategic planning group. We've had regular reports to the board. We've met with different groups in the school district community, and we feel that it starts to tell the story of what it looks like to be prepared, to be a thoughtful, adaptable adult. And again, the children that we serve are going to be adults in the mid to late 21st century as life changes very quickly, and we are creating a meaningful balance between the social emotional aspect of human development and the academic rigor that they need. With that said, we think that this booklet will be something that real estate agents could look at, that corporate people could look at, and that PTOs and other groups could look at, in addition to, of course, our own staff. I think it tells a story, and I would ask that you, at your leisure, take time to actually read it. It's a one cup of coffee read, so you can, you know, kind of sit down and kind of go through it. But if you would read it, I'd appreciate it, and I would welcome your comments on it. Also, we shared, I'm sharing with you, you've seen it before in digital format, but many of you spoke very highly of the Shelton Think Tank publication, and so we made some copies that you could take a look at in hard copy format and also share with members of the community. And finally, Vicki, could you join me up here at the, so, this is the work of many people, and many people have added a lot of very insightful input, but none more important than the work of Vicki White. And so, I asked her to join me in talking about this. In addition to the eight and a half by 11 version, we're soon going to have a poster-sized version of the Vision of a Graduate poster that was handed out to you as well, and you'll see those around the school buildings shortly. Vicki, did you want to?
No, I mean, I think Chris nicely put that together. There were many hands on these products through various committees, not just board members, but staff members, administrators, as well as community members and the parents. And I think at some points during this journey that we embarked upon, it was unclear at times as to what this was going to look like or what story are we telling? And I think we're finally at a point right now that it's coming together nicely and, you know, we're able to have, you know, what we're identifying with as a brand and tell the story of what it is we're doing for the children in the community of Shelton. In addition to some of the documents you have...
This is very, this is very special. Watch, so, as you can see, we're trying to make this, and this has been commented at Teaching and Learning and at a couple of different times, how things are coming together. So, an important aspect of how we communicate, and I don't want to use all the oxygen in the room, I'll let you speak to it, Vicki, but just to say that in addition to hard copy versions, which we think are still important, we also wanted to connect the vision and the milestones to actual curriculum that is obviously still a key part of what we do. And Vicki, could you?
Yes, so we've worked with technology, Dan Zavino and Mike Benham, in creating an aspect of the website that coincides with some of the documents you have in front of you. Many of you know this is our front page of the district website, and here to the left side, you'll see strategic planning. One of the documents over the last year that you took a look at was our pathway, our milestone pathway. So, we've now created this page with the various grade levels and some additional information around what strategic planning meant to the Board of Education in Shelton, and some of the information utilized and how we went about approaching this project. And if you click on one of these grade levels, they're all now live links. So, for example, if we go to grade three, each grade level, the page is set up identically. So, we're hoping that creates some familiarity for people that are looking to move into our district, calling us for information, or have their own children in the district. The left-hand side is our vision and values, strategic planning information. Here you can find the scope and sequence for these content areas, parent roadmaps, additional information around the Common Core standards and what that looks like, and some very parent-friendly brochures, currently just in English and Spanish, and more information for parents and parent guides, some information through the National PTO, as well as some Common Core What we're most excited about is when you scroll on this page, you get some information about what we've been calling the Shelton Way. This brochure here, we have a brochure now for every grade level, is also live. These were also, these will also be available hard copy. They give you information about the particular grade level and what is it that students are expected to know, and some experiences or milestones that they will have throughout this grade level. When you scroll down, you'll see the icon, and you have that hard copy in front of you of the Vision of the Graduate. And then in an effort to include more media and visuals for people that are visiting our website, below you see the six characteristics that many groups, including you guys as board members, worked on in activity to identify some of the characteristics of our Vision of a Graduate. And we now have videos that we will be adding to each of these descriptors so that people can take a look and see some of the work that's happening. So, this is collaboration, some of the work that's happening within the district.
We want parents to be proud to send their kids to our schools. We don't want some kind of old-fashioned, outmoded vision of what we are as a school district to define who we are, which we want to show people what we really do and how it really works. We're not perfect, but we're moving in the right direction, and we're moving pretty quickly. And we know that, and you've heard me mention it before, private schools do a very good job at defining who they are, what they do, their ethos, their identity. Public schools need to do that as well. And we can, we have a lot to show and a lot to be proud of, and that's what, this is part of telling the story, is about that, telling parents and the community what it is we do for the children.
That video was shared with us from Rob Shesky, whom you've seen present sometimes at Teaching and Learning or a board meeting from SIS, and that last student is actually now a student at Shelton High School. And that project that she's working on, Rob is also continuing to be a mentor, that we're starting an organization at Shelton High School, which Dr. Smith is going to be the first in Connecticut, correct, of the national organization?
Yes.
In which they will work to get donors to buy the materials needed to be able to build prosthetics for children in need. So, you know, one of the things that we're excited about is just from that four-minute video, the amount of information that you were able to gain about the great things that we're doing here in Shelton through administration and staff is pretty incredible. You know, that's more than you're going to get from a phone call.
And just to be redundant, I mean, those were all Shelton kids in Shelton Public Schools doing their work.
This is a video here under our Initiative in Self-Direction, shared by Carrie Frederick from Shelton High School, created by her students.
So, part of preparing children for the future is to prepare them to do things like use drones to take photographs. That's what they're doing.
And that's an actual image from the Newfield. Just this morning, I was listening to NPR in which, I don't recall the remote country, but it's a country in which nurses and doctors that are working there, it's a few hours by boat just to get medication to the people that live in that country. And a drone today delivered the first vaccine for a baby to receive, and that came by drone.
Awesome.
I think this gives people a good sense of what it is and how we're trying to connect the vision with the documents, with the work that teachers are doing here on a regular basis, the kind of interesting and meaningful things that teachers are doing with this work. And they're helping us expand the work, of course, and we'll share it in different ways. And it's only going to grow. We're still growing. You know, the high school with Dr. Smith and Mike Marady and others has created a business advisory, which is very powerful, and at the last meeting, there were like 25 business people from the community, ranging from BIP to People's Bank to a variety of different kinds of, for Sikorsky. And they said the things that they're looking for, and they hadn't read, I can't wait to share this stuff with them, but they said that, you know, they need kids who can do presentation skills, that can mix being agile with technology and being able to speak in a persuasive manner. And we are talking about all of those things as part of our milestones. Any questions about this work? And I think you've heard a lot about it along the way, so this isn't a surprising new thing, but we were glad to share with you tonight this next step. Okay. Could you just go with since you're right here? So, we just wanted to give a quick overview of, going out of order, Mr. Chair, just a little bit, the Defined STEM. Many of you on Teaching and Learning have seen a longer version of this. We just wanted to give members of the public and members of the board who weren't present an opportunity just to see, this is what modern education looks like. It's a combination of the human touch, like you saw teacher tonight, excited and encouraging her students, but then students accessing information in a digital format.
So, we just have a few slides that we'd like to share with you around Defined STEM and Newzella. Amanda, tonight's Innovator Award spoke about that. I was fortunate, when I get invited to events out at the school buildings, I try to go as much as possible as many of you. And that activity that she did last year was pretty incredible, and it's going to be even bigger and more involved at ESS this year than it was last year. And one of my fond memories from visiting her classroom that day was there was a little young boy that he himself, as well as his teacher, identified him as a reluctant reader, you know, that he really struggled to be interested in reading throughout the entire year, and this was an end-of-the-year activity. And as that passport around the world activity took place, where they were accessing articles online and reading about various countries and other information, he had the highest number of articles read. And the proud moment that that little boy had in that classroom, sharing that with me and some of the other visitors, was pretty amazing. And that's just a little story from Amanda. She's also an educator that seeks out grants. That's how she was able to get some of those microphones to work on oral presentation skills and speaking, and the kids have really taken to those types of activities. But just in terms of some of the platforms that we're using, it's really starting to just widen people's ideas and thoughts around textbooks and digital access to textbooks and media. And Newzella is one of our big programs that we rolled out last year for K through 12, and this was the program that Amanda was referencing, and you saw some of the work being done in her presentation. One of the things that we tried to look at, and I know these are conversations we sometimes have at Teaching and Learning, is, you know, how do the teachers feel about it? Is it easily accessible? Are we creating more work? Are we streamlining for teachers? And it's always our goal to work on streamlining information, to provide our teachers with resources that are of high quality and can essentially make their lives a little bit easier. Because as many of you have pointed out, you know, just through your visits and through your own experiences, what teaching is like now as opposed to, you know, then, and it's become, you know, it's changed a lot, it's evolved over time. And there's a lot more responsibility in different content areas and in social emotional learning for teachers more than ever. So being able to provide them with quality resources in a streamlined fashion is one of the things that Newzella and Defined STEM do for our educators. Newzella is tied with some very high-quality companies such as History Channel, National Geographic. So they're always collaborating with some of the big-name partners out there to provide timely current events for teachers. Oftentimes, within a two-day frame, you can find an article on Newzella that is related to a current event that you have heard about in the news. And it's vetted through the Newzella research team to be placed on the website for educators to be able to access. Educators can do some editing on this website and provide different comprehension question activities. And there's also text sets available where they put articles together about various topics. So sometimes more challenging topics in certain content areas that you may be looking to access information can be found here. And it's anything from English language arts, mathematics, history, to social emotional And these are some article topics as of today that could be accessed around U.S. history. Newzella and Defined STEM are aligned to the new frameworks for social studies as well as the standards for next-generation science. And it is one of the search criterias that you could use for either platform when you're looking for information. Defined STEM is a program that we took a look at in Teaching and Learning last month. Primarily a performance task-based platform with also an assessment manager, really breaks down the performance tasks step by step, providing an initial activity that is typically a video that is career-oriented to hook students' interests into the topic that they're studying and the task that they are going to embark upon with high rigor that is aligned to the standards. This is completely customizable, differentiated. Teachers can change the content based on the student needs. And again, same thing with questioning and assessments. A very nice aspect of this program is when you get to the project that students are creating, there's a lot of choice involved. So, you know, a project around building aquariums may have seven different projects that students can choose from. So teachers can scaffold how many choices they want to give kids based on the instruction and the strategies and learning that have been completed up until that point. And these are just some photographs of Defined STEM in action, so happens to be at ESS, a grade-one classroom. Collaborative work is an important component of the project-based learning, and some hands-on activities.
All right, thank you, Vicki. Any questions? I think you've seen, many of you have seen this before, but we thought it would be important for everyone to see it in the context of the work we're doing and the connections. All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to a brief presentation by Rob Rosner. The District Attendance Review Team, DART, I was going to put a bullseye up here.
Yeah.
But I thought it would be important for the board to be apprised of what is happening with this group and how it's having an impact on the district.
Absolutely.
Is there paperwork with it?
No, there is not. All of you who sit on Policy Committee remember the hard work that was brought to you concerning the attendance, the new attendance policy that was revised and kind of edited in a way that we thought would be a very positive impact on student population as well as the school system. Having that in mind, once the policy was approved, we started to work through the protocols of the policy process. And one of those protocols, or the end, kind of the culminating activity to the attendance policy is the DART Committee. It's the District Attendance Review Team. And it's a combination of administrators and support staff as well as police and probation. Because the kids that are coming before the DART Committee have actually reached a danger point in their attendance within the school system, to the point where it is going to start affecting their ability to accrue credit. This, basically, the credit problem occurs on the high school level, but the DART Team also sees the opportunity to reach out to the community and some of our students who aren't attending well on the elementary and intermediate levels also. The last, or the first DART Committee that we did have recently, last week, was actually a very interesting experience. We had reached out to other communities who have attendance committees like this, and those communities usually do not invite the student that you're talking about to the committee meeting. We decided that we felt it was important to include the student and their guardians, their parents, in the process. And we invited two students to attend the meeting, and both came with their guardians. It was probably one of the most emotional, it was really telling in the fact that parents were coming to the table not knowing what to do.
And they took it very seriously.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we were absolutely amazed at the conversation we ended up having with both of the students. And here are kids sitting in front of a team of 11, 12 people, you know, very officious, and they were pouring out their hearts and giving us real clues into the reasons why they were having a hard time getting to school, to the point where at the end of our meeting with them, we both, on both situations, we decided to invite them back, let them prove that they really want to go to school, that they're trying to work through their problems, and up their attendance, and we hope to invite them back to sit in front of the committee again with kind of an improvement report in February. But we really feel that this committee has a great shot at making an impact in student attendance for the kids that want to participate in the process. But it was excellent, it really was.
Who was on the team?
Well, we had our guidance curriculum had, yep, Kathy Riddle, Bobby Tar, who is our outreach worker. We had a police officer, we had a probation officer, we had administration from the high school. I sat on it, a couple of psychologists, as well as guidance counselors.
And do you think the impact of this will be positive in reducing cases of possible suspension and expulsion? Perhaps?
Perhaps. I would say it has more of a relative impact on attendance, which could have an impact on suspensions and expulsions. Yeah.
Sounds like a really good idea.
I can't tell you how emotional the meeting was. It, I mean, the kids came to the table wanting help.
Were they high school kids?
Yeah.
Do you get progressive reports between now and February?
Bobby does a phenomenal job at tracking attendance in the district. And it was because of her work with our students that these two students were basically selected because of the number of absences they had already accrued. They were in a danger zone, and rather than wait until after they got past the point of no return, she felt it was important, you know, to call them in. It was, it was great.
Okay. But Laurie, you didn't answer my question. She's tracking it, but is the rest of the people on the committee getting a progress report on a weekly basis to see if, what improvement there is, if any?
No.
So you won't know until February whether or not what you've done is successful?
The committee won't, but Bobby, who tracks, will.
And will she report to someone?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what we're looking for. I mean, you don't want to just sit in February, meet with them, and then say, oh, wow. Bobby is, Bobby is coming back and, I mean, she is keeping in touch with someone who can't.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I mean, and Bobby practically has weekly meetings with most of the administrators in the district, because you always have a couple of students that you're worried about because they're not attending on a regular basis.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
You received yesterday a written report regarding the H-Drive situation that we've had in the district. Dan DeVito is here tonight. And Dan, if you wanted to step forward, the microphone could be of use. Dan's not going to read the report to you, since you had a chance to read it yourself, but he's just going to give an overview and then take any questions you might have. I would say that Dan and his team, in a very difficult set of circumstances, have worked very hard to make lemonade out of lemons, and I think you'll hear a little more about that.
In early October, the server that houses the staff home directories crashed, and when we brought the server back online, the volume that contained all the data was inaccessible by Windows. At first glance, it seemed like there were no hardware issues, the server itself had no red lights, we weren't getting any error messages. So we started running restoration efforts, and after a few days, the best that we got was 11 million files without names or directory structures. So we called OnTrack Data Recovery Services to help with the restoration efforts. They informed us that the master file table of the hard drive, which is basically like the index or table of contents for a hard drive, had been shattered. They rebuilt the file table to the best of their ability. However, the things were so corrupt that not every file opens. After further investigation, it was discovered that there was, in fact, a hardware problem. The issue was the RAID controller that governs the hard drives never notified us that there was a hardware problem for us to resolve. There were no issues, it wasn't reporting any errors or anything. So it was running in a degraded process without us even knowing about it. I was able to find the full backup of the server from January 2018, and have been working on a, with a company to restore it. This will restore 100% of the files created before the year 2018. The company's been having a difficult time getting us access to those files. We can see them, but we can't download them onto our server, so we're still working with them on getting those files. Right now, we've been working with staff to restore their files on a file-by-file basis. What that basically means is we have to look at the file that isn't opening and compare it against the 11 million unnamed files that we have, and try to pare it down and find that matching file, and then we restore it to the staff member, which obviously is a very slow process. I will say, staff have been incredibly patient and understanding through this very frustrating time. I can't imagine the difficulties they're having in the classroom with this, but they've been wonderful and very helpful with us, and they've actually found unique ways to get some of their old files back that we haven't been able to get for them. For instance, if they emailed the file to somebody else, or if they had received it in an email, they were able to get a good copy of it. Or if they had shared it with a staff member previously. So if there were two files, the same file on two different people's home directories, one person's file may not open, but the other may open. So they've been able to share it that way. Moving forward, we've moved all of the virtual servers that was on that RAID controller, we moved them off to one of our other storage area networks, and we're going to be working with staff over the next six months to migrate our home directories to Google Drive. So Google provides us with the service, Google Apps for Education, and part of that is every staff member gets a Google Drive, which is a few terabytes of storage per person. So we're going to be migrating all of that up to their drives in the cloud, which will be better protected by Google. We're also going to be performing disaster recovery drills in the future, most likely on a monthly or bimonthly basis, to make sure that all processes are streamlined in the event of another server crash.
Any questions for Mr. DeVito?
Yes, I read in the report about a $70,000 expenditure. What was, is that a part of the recovery effort?
The recovery efforts was actually around $20,000.
Okay, what was the 70,000? Is that a total of something?
That was a projected cost for a replacement. Oh, okay, yeah, so what we were looking to do, so when that storage area network crashed, and we moved everything off of that onto a new, onto one of our other storage area networks, we now have no more space for other new servers. So we need to replace the bad storage area network. And that will cost about $70,000 to purchase. So that's not part, that's a future purchase.
Okay, that's what I need.
Yeah, that's now part of the recovery effort, the current recovery efforts.
So going forward, just have we laid out a plan so that there is automatic backup in a protected area so that next time the server self-destructs, we go to the, to the backup, which is backed up on a daily basis, and it becomes a seamless transition?
Yes. Yes, we have that process in place, and we've already tested it, we've done random crashes. So what we've done is we've randomly picked servers and said, oh, this one crashed, let's spin up the backup, and it's, and they've been coming up, so we know that we're fully backed up properly now. And from a hardware perspective, the RAID controller that we moved everything to has an automated process, it's a newer model. So the one that failed was from 2012. The one that we moved it over to was from 2017, and has an automated process that when a drive fails, not only does it notify us, it calls Hewlett-Packard and orders one immediately. So then the drive just shows up for us. So that's what we would want to do for our new storage area network also, is it's a completely automated process. So what's supposed to happen with a RAID array is if one drive fails, nothing happens. And we just replace the bad drive and everything operates as normal. So we want to do that as quickly as possible.
Do we pay extra for that?
Nope, that's part of all new storage area networks.
Okay, good. The other question I have is, how is this affecting overtime for your staff?
Right now, it's myself and another employee who doesn't have overtime, so this isn't impacting overtime at all. It's the two of us who are the ones restoring the files on a case-by-case basis. The other, the hourly employees are still working on the day-to-day operations.
Well, Dan, you've handled a very stressful situation in a commendable way, and I appreciate the way you've worked with staff who have mostly been absolutely fantastic at rebuilding and working, but you know, occasionally people get frustrated and you've handled that well as well.
I have a quick question. You mentioned that we weren't notified that the server was having a malfunction. Is there something that we could have done proactively to prevent that, or was it simply...
We expected the hardware to work. So what was supposed to happen with that model is it was just supposed to fire us off an email to say the drive crashed.
That's how it's supposed to work, and it didn't do that.
And it didn't do that, and we've never heard of a case where a RAID controller has never notified us. Even when we physically went to our MDF at the high school and we looked at it, all the lights were green, there were no yellow or red lights.
So there wasn't anything we could have done to prevent?
Unfortunately, not. I won't be buying that model again.
Same company as the new one?
It's going to be a different, that's a It's going to be a different, that, that's a company that I will stay very far away from moving forward.
There's no warranty issue or anything that there's the possibility of recovery of costs?
That's the first thing we did when we, when we worked with OnTrack, and unfortunately, it's out of, out of warranty.
Probably 90 days.
Exactly, exactly.
How old was that?
It was, it was going on six years, yeah. It wa, it's not, but in, in storage world, it is pretty old.
All right, all right. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And finally, as part of my superintendent report, an update on the legislative breakfast. Mark Holden and I attended at CES recently a breakfast. It's a, it's an annual event. It's something that occurs prior to the session, which typically begins in, in January, and it's new, well, it's new and veteran state representatives. It was feisty. I thought it was, there was no, they typically don't produce great insights into what's going to happen, unfortunately, because many people at that point still didn't know things like who is going to be the chair of the education committee. Things like that hadn't been decided yet. There was some discussion, though I thought was positive, about burden of proof, which, as you know, is a special education frame. And, and, and the, I, I at least appreciated the forthrightness of the legislators that were present. They said, look, we're not getting rid of burden of proof. That's not going to happen. So now, with that said, is there some way that certain aspects of what we do, or what we could, we as educators could suggest to them, might, where we might be able to make some incremental changes? And that would, I thought, at least, at least a realistic way to look at the issue of special education costs, not all of which are associated, most of which are not associated with burden of proof, but, but it is, it is an important factor. We did meet the young fellow who replaced Tony Boucher, who is, I think he's 25, but he certainly comes with.
22.
22, okay, there you go, yeah. He comes with a lot of youthful energy and, and, and passion, which was appreciated. He was a good part of the conversation, but he was there to learn, listen and learn. There was some partisan divide, no question about it. Many members, many re-elected members of the Republican Party were not happy with the outcome of the statewide election and made it clear. And that's sort of, you know, understandable. You know, there was a little bit of concern about the direction of how things are going. But there was generally a feeling that, you know, there was a wait-and-see attitude. At the time we had the meeting, Governor-elect Lamont had not started to announce some of his choices for things like chief of staff, chief operating officer. Today, there was another whole set of announcements of people that were appointed to different positions. So there was a lot of unknown, but it's useful to, and, and it was very clear, and we're, and we'll be getting a, a list of all of our legislators with all of their contact information, and they all said, please call us. Ben McGordy was there from our district. Ben McGordy.
That was it.
From, from our, from our elected officials, yeah.
Well, burden of proof is, is important, so that's a topic that will be in the news, then.
Yes, absolutely.
Something that we can look into later. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have approved field trips for information only. We also have information on donor projects. Board action items. Item presented for a vote, consideration of the board to approve the request of Sheldon High School First Robotics Team 230 to conduct fundraising activities during the 2018-19 school year.
So move.
Second.
Most have been made in second. Did any discussion? Sensing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments by the board chair? I'll piggyback a little bit on what our superintendent had mentioned about the legislative breakfast. One of the interesting things is apparently Gail Laviale is the only person on the education committee who was re-elected. So she has no clue who she's going to be working with this year. And so that makes things a little bit interesting in terms of predicting what will happen. We just don't know who's going to be on that committee. So, you know, that's something we'll have to deal with. I was really impressed with the digital content that we've seen tonight, the videos, the handouts and so forth. And I'm thinking it'd be a good thing for the board if we could find more ways to get that information out there, perhaps sharing it on social media. Perhaps we could tie some of the videos together and get a public access teacher program going. Public access doesn't get a tremendous amount of viewership, but it gets some. And, you know, I think it'd be worth going for. Reports on standing committees, teaching and learning.
One minute, please, Mark.
Yes.
Dave and I were looking, and we don't have any field trips to look over.
Till then.
There weren't any. It's just, it's just a standing item.
Okay, well, then we need to make sure that's in our minutes. There were no field trips presented. Thank you.
Okay, reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Teaching and learning met on Tuesday, December 11th at 4:00 here in Central Office. A defined STEM presentation was given by Vicki White and Gabby Zoriz Perez. So I won't go into too much since Vicki just gave a presentation tonight, a, a good overview of what we were presented with as well. The 2019-2020 academic school year calendar draft was distributed for review by administration to collect feedback on any changes or suggestions, and the calendar will be presented to the full board at the regular January meeting. So our next meeting date will be Tuesday, January 15th at 4:00, and our tentative agenda items are modern instructional spaces presentation by Vicki White and Ken Saranich, and new course presentation for Sheldon High School by Dr. Smith. So we will be holding the meeting at Sheldon Intermediate to be able to view real-life instructional spaces in the educational environment. The actual meeting place within SIS is to be determined, and details will be shared as soon as a space is set.
And I would like to add on for the agenda, something that maybe Vicki can address, is to add objectivity for selection of students in responding and participating in presentations on films and such.
Could you discuss that afterwards?
Yeah, just email me, and we'll look at it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Sheldon Board of Education regular meeting and the finance committee met on Wednesday, December 12th at 5:04 PM. Ed Drapp, our finance director, provided handouts for each member present, including people from the public. He gave a complete review with specific line item explanations for both the revenue and expenditure reports. Two important things or items that really impacted the budget are the tentative 41 persons on medical leave requiring substitutes concurrently, and tuition and transportation to private schools for special ed students. It also gave a review of the year-to-date budget, and also the dates for the 2019-2020 budget workshops was also provided. John Calhoun, our facilities supervisor, provided a list of issues and accomplishments for November, and his goals and objectives for January 2019. During his report, discussion ensued about the duck cleaning service, and Mr. Calhoun stated that he will provide the necessary information asked for at the meeting in January. End of my report.
Policy committee.
Policy committee met on Thursday, December 11th at 5:00 PM following teaching and learning. We had a short agenda, basically dealing with gifts and donations. We went through a list of various policies that we might use, discarded several, and zeroed in on policy 1325, community relations. There was some preliminary discussion with regards what we would add. We're looking to add another numbered item with a general sentence regarding donations, and then an A and a B as far as individuals and businesses. And Mrs. Rosner is going to research what there is offered from CAE that we could model after. So that will be an ongoing item for next month. Beyond that, we are bringing forward tonight a final review of policy six, we, we, that night we did a final review of policy 6146.2, promotion accelerated retention. And I'd like to make a motion to approve that policy to sit for review until our next meeting.
Motion has been made in se, is there a second? Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there's one little thing on the first page. We had discussion according to my notes. We added science in the middle of paragraph, and we also had something with social studies, so that will have to be reviewed.
It sounds familiar to me, too.
It did, yeah.
I think it was probably just a typo admission.
All right, so in theory, the board could vote to approve at the next meeting with that amendment, maybe?
Yes.
Right after where science was, Lorraine, I think we had social studies as well.
Okay, any further discussion? Sensing we are ready to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public relations.
I have a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We also looked at the new, well, didn't look. We discussed again a handbook for new and prospective Board of Education members and items in it, and we had discussion about adding a, a possible calendar of a couple of months in the life of a board member so that people can get an idea of the number of things we show up for. And we also were given information about the FOI presentation, which has been a topic of discussion at several committees, and that will be on January 16th preceding, I think it's a budget workshop. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 15th. Also, we will be at 5:00 PM at SIS because of the preceding meeting also taking place there. That's it.
All righty. Public relations.
All right, thank you. So public relations and outreach committee met this evening at 6:00 PM, and our agenda consisted of primarily discussing items that we have discussed in the past, as well as we intend, sort of our strategy on pushing some of these items forward. Our particular, in particular, our opportunity to reach out to the public through the Sheldon Herald, and some opportunity to, to present different perspectives from the board through that media. We've also continued to talk about coffee with the board and the prospect of working that through the school PTOs and having them pick dates where board members could actually visit the schools and have an open time for parents to interact directly with members of the board. We've discussed progress with the Student Partnership Committee. I think it's really interesting, when Lorraine was talking about the DART Committee, it was a great illustrative example of the things that happen when you engage students and you hear what's going on on the other side of things. And I think it's really important that we continue to pursue that. Dr. Couette has reached out to different student groups just to begin starting, to start getting feedback on, you know, what their concerns are, what their interests are. We talked in, in detail about that and what the activities are going to look like going forward for putting that together. We'd like to continue to do things like notes to our Sheldon staff and administrators. We had a picture tonight that's going to turn into a holiday card, so thank you for participating in that. And our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, the 23rd of January at 6:00 PM before the general board meeting.
All righty. Reports of special committee, CES.
There is no meeting, no report, Ms. Given.
Okay. Unfinished business on the ad hoc committee to evaluate proposed changes to the superintendent's evaluation. Kate Koutas will chair that. I'd like Kathy Yolish to serve on that, along with Tom and myself. Okay. New business?
No, new business?
Okay.
Okay. It's good, this is good new business. As many of you know, the subject of tuition for the four-year-old preschoolers has been a passionate subject for me, and I continually sought ways to possibly assist the financial impact on the families involved. So I have some good news tonight to share, and for several families, it might even be a late Christmas present. Speaking with Mayor Loretty just a few hours ago, he generously offered some financial aid to those families of the four-year-old preschool participants. This will only apply to those families who would have been grandfathered in this year. He's asking for those families to provide a paid receipt, and a check will be cut for reimbursement. I believe the amount for each family will be about $700.
That's great.
Please contact Beth Jones, because I believe she met with the mayor, or me for instructions for the reimbursement process. I believe the mayor would like to get all them together, and then he's going to have the, the checks cut and sent directly or distributed to the parents. I'm sure that this offer will be appreciated by whoever takes advantage of the offering. So I'm very proud that at least we're getting something because we, it was very difficult to try to set up a GoFundMe page. So I'm happy about that.
Are all those four-year-olds that are, that were in the program last year going to be contacted directly to make them aware of this?
Yes, I, well, we already have, Beth, Beth has, I believe, given the mayor a list of names already, and we're going to work with Kristin to find out about the other ones, and, you know.
Just so nobody goes without it because they didn't know about it.
But it's only for the, it's only for the ones.
That were in the program last year.
That were in the program, right.
Which is what you and I both wanted to see happen.
Right, which is what we kind of wanted, and, you know, it's, it's a start of something. So I feel, I feel a little bit of.
That's awesome. Thanks, Kathy, and thanks, Beth, for your.
Yes.
Persistence in the matter. It's great. It's great news. Thank you.
Kristin?
So $700 towards the remaining balance of what they would get, because there are two payments left.
Right.
And they are about $650 each payment.
Right, but he, I believe he is going to give 700. In other words, he just wants a receipt for the next payment or whatever, and then he is going to cut the, the check. So it'll be like a 700. I mean, I don't know how many there are. Maybe, maybe it could be a little more, but that's, this is a very good start, so I'm happy about that. Next I'm working on ceiling.
Moving right along, we have the vacancy report, staff and stipend actions, and our enrollment report, and we'll move on to highlights. Does anybody have anything for highlights besides me?
I do. Go ahead. I'm going to start. The Sheldon Life Book is out, and thanks to one of our board members, we have wonderful articles in it about our school system, another way of communicating with the public. And I want to say that Kathy has been writing for them, and she's a wonderful writer. She's covered many things in her, in her career, and this is just another one of those.
And I only paid her a dollar to say that.
Wow.
I happened to go to, well, I, I happened to go to the concert at Booth Hill School, which, oh my goodness, I think every pa.
I've heard it was mobbed.
It was so mobbed, I told Dr. Z, and of course he.
Two sessions.
I said two sessions because there was an overflow of parents, and I guess if you really want all the parents to come to things, you just have to put on a show, and then you got to hit them with the other stuff you want them to know. Ooh, looks like a home.
They come out for that.
They do come out for that. And Dr. Z was the conductor of the staff, and they did a great job. Music, the music programs in our school system are phenomenal. I also went to the one at Long Hill, and Nancy Adams, as always, did a terrific job. The kids are singing in hearts, and they're singing in Spanish, and they're singing in languages. It's just so phenomenal. I wish we could have another, like, whole entire school system concert. Those were the days we used to have them. I don't know if you, you probably don't remember, but remember? And it was so, it was really such a nice feature. And of course, we all, we went to the Kate, the cast dinner, which was a great, it was a great feeling to see, to feel those kids and see how many kids.
We have one of our workers sitting right here in the audience. Yay!
And I want for the record, one of them was a former student of mine. I am so happy for you because, you know, all of my students have.
Graduated.
Graduated.
Anybody else have something under highlights? Okay, I've got a couple of things. First off, you're used to me talking about the robotics programs. Last month, we, or actually earlier this month, we hosted the state championship for the FLL Robotics, and the first place and second place teams, who are both going to represent Connecticut in the world championships, come from Sheldon.
Wow, that's great.
So, you know, our robotics folks, they do an amazing job. There's a lot of teachers that are involved as mentors and so forth. that are involved as mentors and so forth, there's a lot of parents that are involved, and they're amazing kids, so that's a terrific thing. Yesterday, Dr. Clouett and Ken Saranich and I had the pleasure of going to the senior center where SIS eighth-grade students put on a concert for the seniors. And it was a real good concert, and there were probably about 75 seniors there, and they really enjoyed the music. And then afterwards, we had a short question and answer period, and there were a couple of questions, but it was, you know, nice interaction with them and so forth. And also, I should mention that Kristin and Ken led the students and the audience in Feliz Navidad, and so, one of those fun things. Last but not least, before our next meeting, January 20th, we're going to have a lunar eclipse, okay? And anybody is welcome to come out to Booth Memorial Astronomical Society in Stratford. I'll be setting up my scope around 9:00 o'clock at night, and others will be as well. Primetime for the eclipse doesn't happen until 11:40 at night.
Oh, my goodness.
And it runs until about 10 minutes to dawn.
You're lucky.
But, the good news is, the next day is Martin Luther King Day, so it's not a school night, so...
But it's a cold night.
Yes, dress warm.
Bring your hot cocoa.
You know, essentially astronomy is kind of like ice fishing, you know, dress for much colder weather than you expect, but in any event, it's free, come on down, and if you're a parent, bring your kids. Okay, I have nothing else, and the next item on our agenda is adjournment. We are adjourned.